...meeting to order, roll call.
Erica?
Here.
Jeremy?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
MC?
Yeah.
JJ?
Here.
Hey, if you've joined me for the play.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you for your presence. We pray that all the processes can go through here this evening and bring you on. And we just will be failing here to talk to the high school.
First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
No.
And a motion by MC. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like a sign. That was approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the last meeting and I would say approve with amendments. There is item one A where it talks about the resolution to purchase police vehicles. I received that resolution a week after this meeting, so I don't believe that was actually a resolution.
I listened to that eight on that said one A on the on the tape recording.
Well, I knew we discussed that we wouldn't be able to do that when we talked about tabling the budget.
It was it was voted upon. I listened to the recording on that as well as I listened to one, one A and three.
Well, the I don't remember one A and I didn't have documents, but that's okay if y'all were prepared with them. The second item that's of concern to me is number one and number three, the three oh votes. I voted with the group and it was clunky and not convenient, so I started calling my vote out separate. But on those I said you are all in favor say aye and then I went tried to do the aye with y'all and I did that twice and the rest of the time I called it out is when y'all voted three oh and then I said the mayor votes in the affirmative and that's number four. But you can you can do what you want to with those, but that's I do know that I voted twice that I didn't call it out separately.
I you know Justin or message Justin about that. Justin, do you?
Well, yeah, I thought so I looked at my. Is that on? I looked at my notes and my notes indicated a vote, but I may have assumed or mistaken, but then I went to the meeting on Facebook and the audio cuts out.
Did you get the instructions I sent?
I did, yeah, I got the yeah.
Did you do them?
You can hear the audio on the audio recording. It's a it's a roll call and on certain ones he'd call out and I vote, you know, there's three votes and he would call out they never call out his vote and all those particular ones they there weren't, so you can't really tell. So what I think what I think might be that I was trying to see if the if the Facebook recording would show show a vote where the audio recording went on. I I think it's all against us to table this. A couple of they don't matter because there was motions to table, so they wouldn't, you know, four folk didn't.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't didn't in the end do anything, but the one item, I think it's the pay cash policy and we'd like to bring that back for a regular meeting and redo it. I was hoping the Facebook video would have sort of cleared that up, but the audio halfway through the meeting kicked out for some reason.
I I saw these on here and I went to the office and listened.
Yeah, you sent me the.
And I and I and Mary were at the office and I sent them to Justin because he has instructions on things like this.
I I I was, I mean, so there's three items, two of them, I don't think they have any impact because of the motions table, but on the third it does. So I would just recommend not approving this meeting and let me see if we can confirm another way, but likely the the result is it's going to be having to bring that one policy back before before vote this week. So is that?
I think the motion we take.
Is that satisfied, everybody?
Thank you. Yeah, the motion from Mike to table and then C to second second step motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed like a sign. That is tabled. Next item on the agenda is the June and July finance city financials and I'm also going to entertain a motion to table these. I've discussed it a little bit with Justin and I think these need to discuss at a work session where we can kind of break them down and get into it. There was a significant number of mistakes last time. There are still a lot of it has been fixed, but there's still a significant number of mistakes and I think it would be better just to address them in the work session.
Could you, since you said there's a significant number, could you email the council the mistakes that you're seeing so we can compare our notes?
Sure. I can do that.
So couldn't we expect that email next week by Monday?
It can be. You can expect that email tomorrow.
I would like to make a note to the table as an example. I've got the copy of the budget. I got the finances. I tried to reconcile it. They did.
They don't.
They don't. So. There's a problem within the city. Council votes aren't involved until they can reconcile differences. I'm not going to vote on a budget or finances until that's resolved.
So that we got a motion in this. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by MC. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like a sign and those are tabled.
Next item is the water and sewer financials. Do I hear a motion to approve?
No.
And a motion by MC. Do I hear a second?
Second. Why are we?
I second. It's second by JJ. You go ahead.
Why are we not tabling this since it's part of the financial report?
Because it does reconcile and it's not got errors in it.
I think I'm a little bit no. I think it will be tabled when we look at all of it in one shot.
I don't mind just looking at all of it, but I just don't see a reason when it's good that that's however you want to vote on that. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
What are we going to do?
Approving of the.
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer financials. We'll just start that over. It was kind of a meeting. Do I are all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed like a sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then that's tabled also. Next item is tire department report.
So what we moved on half, I'm going to ask the board of the council waiting. I know it's a builder, a contractor, some additional rest of the issues. This might be the other. We'll figure out how to action with the mayor and see if we want to do this twice. You know, on this thing, so perhaps. That's not why I really think about it.
So obviously, you have the day issues and what are those things? What problem are we talking about?
We got some the roof we got roof issues. It's leaking, but it's.
Wavy.
Wavy. The shower, the drain is away from the drain and into the bathroom. Sheetrock nails are totally have the sheetrock for whatever reason and several wire issues.
I know that we've been dealing with that for a while now. So what did Justin do? He recommended?
So we've been outside and looked at all the issues. Last time the Greg, my office works in construction location, notified all the subs and contractor for being outside nine twenty K. It was be careful on what it certainly had an issue.
One such.
And and so it's in the notification that we have problems happening on a response act. And so what we're talking about now is whether we can file an action on it.
And we fix it and then?
Well, I mean, that is one of the possibilities is that we look at somebody coming in to help you with some point or some point. Some of the items are minor or minor or minor. The others are are more substantial. They still need to definitely consider the parts that's 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 what we need to have some of the analysis of. So that's going to be the next meeting that's coming up soon. And probably come back to you all if you're in a work session or need to. Before then, except this, it's probably something.
Yeah. Thank you.
So you're in contact with that attorney that's.
Yeah, he works with Justin.
Okay.
Like I said, we'll we'll meet this month. I'll try to figure out what next steps. There are big external contractors out there that live in the building. We do some prices. I saw one thing out there yesterday and kind of looked at it and just told me, man, we said this guy is out there to get the price of it. I just I don't want to do anything without the mayor and rest of the crew or doing any of it.
I'm worried about if that original contractor would come back. What kind of quality of work they used to do if that's what they provided the first time? You know what I mean? They're going to just, you know.
And I told the architect, which I've not heard anything back from him, because he came out and looked at it too. You know, the shingles, we can't just rip part of the shingles off the sub bags and.
That's fine.
So.
I really don't think we can go on and wait and wait until as Justin has moved forward because I'd like to see it. And if you have to fix it and screw them all in, we can't work for it and that's what we need to do.
We got a little bit of a, I mean, we like to help, I mean, the D C. I'm such a.
Thank you so much.
And other other side, um, the wire contract, we have to do a purchase agreement on that for the four year, but probably different to go to make a action. So we have to do a letter, a deal on it, but not enough. So if we sort of purchase that, we need to do a purchase agreement on that. If we lose this wire contract, three to four years' deal time, so it would be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you guys got all the stats in front of you that you have a chance to look through those. If you got any questions about any of them, but it's seem to be just work as usual, other than school started and the first time in probably a very long time it takes brings actually out of school in their city limits. So we were dealing with the traffic and the pickups and all that kind of stuff. The first week was crazy, which it always is at every school. First day of school was really rough because you got all those kindergartens and parents would have to take their kids to school and walk into their class and they do all that. So traffic was kind of crazy first week or so. But I was talking with the guys that I have up there who work with the traffic. So it's gotten a lot easier now since we're in the second or third week of school. Things have started to smooth out. Parents figuring out what time they need to leave the house to avoid some of the traffic. So that that's smoothed out pretty good. So they're up there for maybe thirty five, forty five minutes directing traffic and weirdo. So can't complain about it.
I have a question. Suspicious activity person or vehicle. No?
Say that one more time.
On suspicious activity?
That's we get calls, just anything. It could be a parked vehicle on the street. That's suspicious. That's that's what it gets logged as or a person walking down the street. That's kind of a catch off. Just something out of the ordinary. Somebody gets called in and we have to go check it out.
I saw over forty eight traffic stops. Sixty eight stations.
Forty two.
Forty two stations. Oh, yeah, down the block. That's scary.
Very far.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks. All right. I'm going to grab this mic and put it over here. I don't want to shove your mic in Justin's hands.
Next is planning mission.
Good evening. Planning mission out last week. Still have this rezoning we need for lawn property up on follow those. What's up with it? Some new road connections. Hopefully they got a lot of product really digging into the next issue. Everything goes through. Don't be seeing that oil next month. Other items we looked at, depending on the rezonings, is a rezoning up on highway one twelve at the intersection of one twelve with Pleasant Road Road or accident, however you want to call it. There's actually two up there. One is on the northwest corner. One is just southwest corner. It actually has a piece of land that touches and kind of goes around residential property though. Other those we looked at, planning condition hasn't had any issues with those yet. Obviously we'll have to terminate on that next month. And again, we'll potentially see all three of these rezonings entered in next month's session. Next thing we're working on, again, heading on the rezon is we've got a public hearing for the new H Springs zoning map. So we have that posted on the place or website. We have public notice out for it's hung up at City Hall. And we're running public notice for citizens coming in to take a look at it. Ended up later zoning map and starting for the annex lands and we landed on the main swath.
Can we get that on Facebook too?
Sure. I'll see. Then also there's the empty corey office of evening. The two rezonings that we talked about a couple of times, the one on Sanders Road, sorry, the one on Tors Road or Tors Drive. And then there's the one on Main Street down here at Southside. I'll have to get to those with the questions. I'm glad that answers my. Do I have any other questions?
Do you know what the restaurant chain is?
Restaurant chain?
Yeah, it's a it's a rezoned, you know, to make whatever restaurant change we know that's changing.
Yes. Trying to think. They have turned in paperwork. It was a sign. Yeah, they put it in the paperwork, I guess. But that's that's the problem is we'll take it on. Can I say?
Next is water and sewer.
So we had a water and sewer committee that's not. Actually, the water is going down to four to one percent now, which is not what we want to do. But definitely we're moving to the right direction, the same light that ends the tunnel point, I think. I think a lot of it is due to the fact that we have our site around heavy and detection and we're fixing them. I think they've got fourteen there. So that's. So I'm very happy to see we're spending every month seems like we're starting to go down. Open ticket. We used to have pages and pages of open tickets. We've gone to one page now. I'm really super excited about that because we started with so many pages. Now we've gone to power twenty open ticket. And out of those twenty open ticket, we still have the issue with visibility of what those tickets are for. We know it's for water. So we don't know what's causing it for not being closed yet. So we're working with a software company to come up with it. Work around that with the invisibility to the issue so we can understand and move over faster. And then the follow up, those ticket is another thing that we're working on to make sure the ticket that are closed, actually are closed. There's no issue there. So the citizens will feel comfortable after we take this. I have here one public work directive, but that position is, I think, is filled. It is right now, from my understanding, Mr. Mayor, I wasn't involved with that, so you can stick to that. But individual has been hired, but kind of starting to stand with that player. And they have one public work opening. So at least I think indeed was very helpful with adding more folks for that public work. And that was a good move to do. And I I myself am a little bit concerned with having this under. Somebody's struggling with this under, but that's just me and I expressed that to Mr. Mayor. However, things are moving in the right direction as long as we can hold them that way. Okay.
And then I'll look for that sewer financial. Then maybe one take over the.
I think. Yeah, I went to the sewer water sewer financials and we also discussed subcontract work. We got two subcontract, have a subcontractor. The one handles the treatment side. And we kind of discussed what was going on out at the plant and the drip fields. We also discussed the water distribution side. We have the boring contractor that's we have a third party that's coming in to assist the city with all the boring and more specifically services that were identified and became freed. They're working on those. They should be normalized again after next week. We also have a lead copper reporting rule that we have to have a report to the state by October sixteen of this year. That is just to identify any potential lead copper service line that you have in your system. We are actually working with the state agency that'll do that work for you at no cost or they'll cover those costs. As long as you're on their they won't go beneath this deadline, as long as you're on that list, you will be okay as far as that's concerned. The water repairers we talked about were very pleased with the progress we've seen the mayor. You'll remember we talked about it earlier on, as we start completing these repairs, it's not going to be an immediate change because we start on day one of the month. You may repair one or two. By the end of the month, you may be up twelve. So it's going to be gradual decrease through time. And so that's what we're experiencing now. And hopefully over the next few months, we'll start seeing something coaching to those teams as they go. I do want to caution you, as we are correcting these deficiencies in the system, we're having others show up and we're staying on top of those as well. Westwater Creek Plan and the drip zones, those seem to be fairly dry. Staying in contact with the Bartlet's there. They have a little bit of saturation on February seven, but I agree before we got that corrected. And then the system water pressure discussion. You'll remember there has been discussions about the summer line rupture. This is part of the ten and three discussion. Some older subdivisions that we've had, we've narrowed it down to two where we seem to have most of the properties. So we're working with Julie to determine the number of service lines that have been repaired to date and how many are left to see what type of cost they will be just to go in and redo the rest of those since they continue to rupture as as we go through and correct those. Once we get that identified, we also want to look at potentially do a water model of your system to determine is to help us with growth, planning for the future, but also help us to determine if we want to reduce the water pressure within the city's system and how much we could reduce it without adversely affecting your systems. Now on the next sheet, now I'll update you on the current construction projects that we have. I will skip the R N I. I'm going to talk about it at length. With the M A project, it continues to move forward. Originally, we were scheduled to be completed in the September, October timeframe. They were tracking a little bit faster than the time that was allotted for the project. We did receive an updated schedule about two weeks ago and we have amended that schedule to show that they'll be completed about years in. They just they adjusted the schedule to show utilizing all the available work time that they have. The directional drill, that was a big unknown. They adjusted that schedule before they got the large directional drill out there. It goes about four thousand feet. And I can tell you that in less than a week, they were able to go at four thousand feet and pull back, but they had to drill the same hole three times to give up the thirty six inch diameter line. So the rock may not be as big of a challenge as we thought it could have been. So we hope they're going to continue that track and finish well before the end of the year. But more to come at the next meeting. Nothing on the Westwater Creek Plant need to permit it. Water service area expansion again is ongoing. We have scheduled meetings with both Mittenville and Springdale to get that moving forward. We finally have a public meeting. Sanitary sewer master plan, we have placed out on hold due to the simultaneous annexation and de- annexation just because that large area will affect the total master plan of Westwater. So we're picking that back up and moving forward. The Roberts Road Waterway Extension, it's one we need to have a little bit of discussion over. That project has been designed. We've been negotiating decent from forty or forty of the property, or its property. And we are we are a little way apart from what the praise values are and what what their counteroffers have. Just to give you an idea, if I add up all the appraised totals of these four properties, they total thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars. And we've got one property owner that's asking for fifty six thousand for heels. So again, there's a large discrepancy between those. We had a lengthy discussion last night about this. We wanted to ask for approval to negotiate above the appraised value, to the thirty eight thousand five hundred to fifty eight thousand five. We thought that seemed to be a reasonable number. And then if we can't meet somewhere and that remains a property owner, it's good approval to move forward with condemnation. Again, we want to continue to try to work with them. But in effort to keep the project moving forward, I just wanted to present that to you all and get your team back fixed. I don't know about something we need to talk about later, Mayor, for potential guidance on the direction that the council would like to go or MC or maybe I want to handle that.
Are you going to have a? Is that something we could discuss a minute and take a motion on tonight? Okay. Is there any discussion on that option?
Also, the district is for long term last night and we just what their praise value is and what they're asking about to part of however, we're willing to go above our praise value. And if we can get there, then we want to go with condemnation because we can't hold it because everything is on hold. We want to be reasonable and even at that time, we're willing to negotiate, but at some point we go to what we want and move forward.
That is something we can done with the previous water line and the sewer line is even when we condemn, we don't close the door on discussion. A lot of times that will bring them back to the table when we try to be fair and continue the negotiation as long as we can get to a fair and reasonable price. And if we can't, then we're able to move forward and a judge will determine that if they appeal there. So that is the I prefer not to go that route when we don't have to. And we try to negotiate first, but we don't close the door at that point. Just walk away. We do try to continue the negotiation. So any further discussion?
The fifty eight thousand, that's a ton. That was on the one for that one specific ten dollar, the praise value for that that easement was fifteen thousand nine hundred.
That was on the one, for that one specific ten dollar, the praise value for that easement was fifteen thousand nine hundred, and their count was fifty-six thousand three hundred and twelve.
I think you means the fifty-eight thousand five hundred, that's the total amount that you'd be raising?
Yes, yes, that's correct, going from thirty-eight five with praise, and it's given us a leeway of additional twenty thousand dollars.
That's wrong.
Depending, instead of, rather than looking at fees on an individual basis, we thought it was the full of money, would be better than negotiating.
And that is stay consistent also, we're not going to base them on the more or less of what they're asking.
We have four. No, we have zero sets. We need four easements, and we don't have to. And if you remember, we talked about this like our last meeting, that we would be coming in after the visit with, about it at the water, and sewer.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I think we need to make a motion, so I'll move.
Okay, I got motion by Jay Jay second by MC. Now, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. And that did pass.
All right, our emergency connection, we've been in discussions with Rogers Water Utility over. We're continuing those, and it looks like the best location for that's going to be less attached in El Paso. But we've got to pull that closely, because we'll be around about there coming up. So, we're talking about how that can look, and we can plan for that, wherever we're doing the relocations in that area at the R dot. The auto grid installation search protection, we've got our reference consultant out of sight. And we've got plans in place now, or being close to having all the plans in place to make those changes, to decide to better protect it, the lighting in the future. That's something we're going to see at R dot.
Our U L full set actually gave us a plan today.
Okay, we actually got plans today on that, so we'll be ready to move forward there. Lastly, the R dot Howard Lookwell realignment. To remember, the council has approved a contract with the club before with the design and relocation of those utilities, but we cannot move forward until we receive a, we, the city, receive an agreement from R dot that states that they will reimburse the city for anything that is outside of the right of way. That agreement, I believe, has landed in the inbox, Mayor?
It came in, uh, before yesterday.
Okay, so that has been sent. Basically, it refers to, it's an agreement between the city and R dot that states that, that refers to our contract, that states they will reimburse the city on the basis for all the design associated with this work. That is what I am going to be talking about, seeing if there was a way we could move forward with R dot with that agreement at this point, so we can begin designing. And again, the reason we're not starting designing is if we start designing without agreements in place, then R dot will not reimburse the city for any hours spent before that agreement is reached.
Do I hear a motion to approve that? The agreement with R dot, so that they can move forward with the relocation of the utilities. Were live. Do I hear a motion? MC made the motion, and Jay Jay seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. That too is approved.
And that concludes the water sewer. Yes, sir.
On the public work report?
Yes.
Leak cards?
Yes, sir.
Leaks that have been detected?
That's correct, the leak cards are actually directed from the Tim and Creed report. They identify, I forget the number of leaks there, but they call them leak cards. And that's what is left on the bottom right-hand side of the Tim and Creed.
Is that the number of the card?
That's correct, it's the card number, I think it's fourteen left.
I have a question, there's been questions in favor, is there a list of all of our leaks that are associated with these numbers and leak cards?
Yes, there is, there's actually a report.
I'm sorry?
There's an actual report and individual leak cards for each one. I'll say leak cards in Excel spreadsheet that identifies everyone, yes.
Did you just really have one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I can just ask her about it. And the bottom line is, these little, these little leaks ever seen pop up are nothing compared to what's in the water here that probably needs to be fixed first.
That's correct, and everybody's different. Everybody's different on leaks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anything else? Thank you. Next one's the attorney's report.
If you need, I'll be brief, so we have a big meeting, a big meeting ahead of you tonight. I'd like three things of your attention that are coming forward to you in the next month or two. Going to try to time it for appropriate work sessions, we don't have too many other things going on. First and foremost, well, first and foremost, two things are going to be items that we've been talking about quite a bit, and that is easement and property transfers with regard to the drip fields, the Gulf Force has been working on that. The way that's going to come forward to you is a resolution that brings authority to transfer to parcels of property that we own in the field, that's where the treatment plants are. And then, there'll also be authority with regard to receiving back a cadizment. If you recall, we are, when all this is done, and the structure's finished, everything's tested, and we are helping to map that and turn it off and decommission the treatment system down there. We will transfer, by agreement, we will transfer the actual land where the treatment plants sit back to the Gulf Force entities. We are retaining a significant, very significant for us easement that goes up the hill for our utilities. And then, so that's one part of it. The other part of it will be an easement vacation that we'll have to do by coordinates through the council. And that will be releasing some water from utilities that we have on the crisscross of the Gulf Force that we're ordering, once the system is decommissioned. So, that'll be coming forward, it'll be timed for when we need it, and already. But we'll also give plenty of time, because we'll have to prepare the deed transfers, and that usually takes a little bit of time as well, so that's number one. Number two is franchise agreements, I think we have a draft, franchise, but it's a new form to propose. We're bringing that forward to all the work session to discuss, but it deals with what the utility can do in our right of ways, what they have to cut the right of way, new work, how they have to replace and fix it, and notations, and lots of that. So, I have one prepared for, that could apply for gas and telephone and fiber. I also have one that I've been working on for cable, that's, cable's a little different. And so, the, I think the idea is either September or October, one session, depending on where you all are going, but I'll put drafts of those in and come and discuss them with you, and we can talk. Really, actually, if there are any other issues that we need to be addressing, the midlands are, perhaps on our streets, flooring, cleaning up when they, when they get responsiveness, things of that nature. Making sure that with all the growth the city's experiencing, there's a lot of work in the right of ways, so making sure that's done appropriately, along with the appropriate franchise speaking, that's something else we need to talk about. Thirdly, just the other day, received a request to talk about a detachment, so another one. This was on the south part of town, it's the person property owner seeking to detach from Cave Springs and going to Springdale. I've sent that along to Mayor Daniel, and David, to meet with them about it, and then, need to have a discussion with you all about that as well. I don't know all the details, except it's around that river, and properly, where we've had a number of detachment, annexations occur in the past, so just want to make you aware of that, in case you hear of it. But we'll talk about that, and I'll bring forward the information to you all to discuss on what you want to do.
That exes, I don't know.
No, it's actually like the simultaneous detachment, so that's what the request is, I assume. And they also, could be an asset of some kind, right now, so simultaneous detachment.
And the homeowner is requesting an ex?
The property owner is saying.
Thank you, Bill.
And the recent services for Creed, so that's just what they're going to look at, providing the information. That's a good one, sorry.
Thank you. Park treasurer's report. Mayor's report. And I want to change the direction a little. I promised a very positive and professional approach to city government, and for five years, I feel that I did that. This year's council meetings have digressed into something else entirely, and for my part in that, I do apologize. In that vein of renewed dedication to a positive and professional approach, I make the following statement. As I have stated before, from time to time, I receive letters of praise about people who work in all of Cave Springs departments. I have received thank yous for the quick response to mow an overgrown intersection for better visibility, appreciation for the tech staying late for water and sewer leak to ensure the services were restored, recognition for courteous and helpful people in the front windows, and professional and knowledgeable planning commission and planning staff. I often relay these statements to the people involved, but I think it is important that you hear what's being said about our people. I received one of these letters this week, it is a result, as a result of the land swap. And although they are not a resident, they are affected by the change. It is something to be proud of, and I will share it at this time. Says, it starts out, hi Mayor, as I have mentioned before, my wife is a teacher at Evening Star Elementary. She has been singing the praises of Cave Springs Police Department since the start of the school year. It appears there are two police officers watching traffic and the pedestrians along Pleasant Grove Road each morning when the school traffic is in session. According to her, what the city of Rogers was doing was good. However, the Cave Springs Police Department is performing on a higher level. Thought you might like to hear some good news, take care. Thank you, Chief, for your organization and the assistance in this area. And thank you to your officers that are representing Cave Springs well in this endeavor. Your efforts are being seen and recognized for a job well done. Thank you. Next item is the public comments. Do I have any public comments?
My name is Carolyn Aiken, I live at forty-three oh four South Eighty-Sixth Street. You assert what I was going to say. I have heard nothing but praise for the chief and his officers for the elementary school, the crossing, the traffic, which is always bad anyway, but it's been really great, so it's been very positive from all the neighborhood. We've got a lot of elementary school kids in there, and the parents are really excited about it. Also, I wanted to thank publicly Penny in the Streets Department. I've called her a couple of times about some stuff, and she's been very knowledgeable, and has even called me back, and I just wanted to thank y'all for that.
Anyone else? If there's no additional public comments, we'll move to whole business. And I'll start with S O Ps, we are moving forward with those, and those will be provided as soon as possible. Next item's the traffic light. I think we're still pretty much where we were a month ago on the traffic light, we're still waiting to get drawings.
Well, we are, we have finished the drawings, we're ready to go. We have one item that, your last comment from R dot, they asked us to coordinate with their designer on the exact right of way that you're paying for the two six, or the one twelve work. And we have got a request in, and we're following up on that weekly, if that, once we have that, we can submit to R dot. The drawings are ready, they're finished, other than the right of way.
Next item is the community building, they've gotten all the siding in. You've probably noticed siding going on the outside, siding is going in on the inside as well. And they have began painting on the inside, so it's moving forward fairly quick.
Was siding on the whole outside?
Look, not all over, they matched the siding that was there. And so, they have come in, and the areas that were lacking siding, they've replaced it to match the old siding that was there before. And when I say siding, I'm talking about the wood strips, the decorative wood strips.
So, we're waiting, we're waiting on siding for the inside and the...
No, no, I said the siding has all been delivered, and they've put it up, and now they're beginning to paint.
They've got enough misunderstanding where it was. At least on the east side, or the north side of the building, with just some at the bottom and some at the top, why did they not, when all this downtime, paint that in the middle?
They're going to paint it all at once, so it all matches.
I don't understand, it just seems like it's a waste of time, if they painted that, and then come back and paint it this out, to me.
Anything else? Next.
Doing a projection, I think it will be thirty-eight.
I don't have the latest projection, I have a call in to the... It was initially September, first of September.
Be nice to know that at the next meeting.
The wider road signs are in, we are waiting on posts, and those posts are supposed to be delivered this week. And so, we expect to be able to get those signs up soon. The Ridgewood repairs should be able to move forward as soon as we approve tonight's project for the, out of the highway. There's very little left on the interior, there's like three or four drains that he's going through at the same time as he vessels. That's the area that he's looking at as well. The council packets, do you want to discuss that further?
I just think we should follow our ordinance when it comes to those. I understand things are up, but a lot of things are going up lately, so I just want to make sure that I'm doing my due diligence, and being a budget, not even before the last meeting was a little frustrating. So, let's please follow our ordinance, to at least get a five right here and five.
It actually says, the latest ordinance, just that's right.
I think the mayor is saying that mayor, it's like, when you dig into it, you've got Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, for a lot of visits, they're a week, and you don't have time to dig into it, do what you can do.
And that's why you see me work a lot of times till later, and I'm black, right, to get you on Friday. And this, this year's ordinance, and last year's as well, I think, says...
I can pull them out.
I can't, I can't do it.
Well, the thing is that I honestly think it should be submitted to that, but you have two weeks of meeting meetings to do them. And any delays, especially when it comes to budget wise, should be addressed. And we had a brief conversation about that the other day, but if there's questions, go to the people, don't wait two days, so that it can get to the council on the time they can, please.
All right. All right. Next item is a resolution to amend the twenty twenty-four budget to appropriate for the fire safety and education expense salaries and by their view. Do I hear a motion to approve? Is this not the entire budget? It's not even the addition of the fire. Got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That was approved. What is our resolution number?
Thirty-two.
Thirty?
Two.
Two. Next item is the resolution to amend the twenty-four budget and to create the, to authorize creation of three new police positions and the appropriation of additional funds for the, and for the same. Do I hear a motion to approve? Got a motion by Mike. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by M C. Any discussion?
So we can do this the same as the other one, even though the budget's not approved?
Yes, because this is amending the budget.
Okay.
I'm weird. In the future, I'd like to see it total at the bottom. Maybe that's not so weird that I can add it up, but it's just.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That's approved. Next item is a re, a resolution to waive competitive bids and purchase the two police vehicles and the equipment. Take those with you now. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion by J J. Second by Mike. Do I hear any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And that's approved. Next item is the resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate a contract with Dunco for the Highway two sixty-four Ridgewood drainage. Do I hear a motion to approve? Got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy. Any discussion?
Is that the, the block down the hill there that's got the, the water concrete there already?
It's where the water concrete is. It's where this fence recesses and the drain pipe comes out and then that area right along there in the bottom of the ditch. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. That's approved. That's thirty-five. Next item is the resolution to change, to authorize change order thirteen for the community building restoration project. And this is the one that we discussed at the work session for the recessed sidewalks. So the brick will fit in and stay secure and level. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion by Jeremy. Do I hear a second? Second by J J. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
This is going to be a big gap in here. We're going to put these bricks, these bricks, right?
Very short time, there will be blank bricks coming to fill that.
Okay, this was initial of the company, right?
Right.
Are there any, is there a cost because it's going to be bricks, not concrete?
No, because it's a sidewalk still. It's recessed and it's going to be a solid concrete underneath the bricks so bricks don't sink into the mud.
I think exactly.
My understanding is it's still a four inch like the sidewalk.
I may be wrong. Doesn't it have to be that, isn't there like a thing that sidewalk has to be?
Custom, you're going to be a board sidewalk, present board sidewalk, particularly we've got brick recessed rather than the scoring bottom side and the street top. You've got to have a recess in there, which is additional filling up required. I don't know this exact detail of this, but there's additional labor required for that type of sidewalk.
Well, you might, the money that's raised from the race will be considerable, be eleven hundred dollars a week or so. And I hope so too, but to me, hybrid.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And that was approved. That's thirty-six. Next item, a resolution to approve the national opioid settlement. And I would entertain a motion to approve. Got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And that's approved. That's item, or that's thirty-seven. Next item is an ordinance to rezone approximately one point six eight acres on Bright Road. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third reading by title only?
Seven.
Was that, okay, that was M C. I got a motion, do I hear a second? Second by Erica. And roll call.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
J J?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Can't be an orgus of them.
Twenty twenty-four dash fifteen eighteen five point five.
Fifteen. It's a orgus twenty twenty-four dash fifteen.
Fifteen.
One five, one five. CDK Springs, McFadden, Arkansas, orgus to rezone approximately one point six eight acres located at five seven three Bright Road from acreage commercial C three to single family residential R one and CDK Springs, Arkansas.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
No.
Got a motion by Erica. Do I hear a second? Second by Jeremy. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
J J?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Okay, and that did pass. The next item is an ordinance to rezone approximately two point four six acres on South Main Street. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and put this on third reading by title only?
Seven.
Got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy. Roll call.
M C?
Yes.
J J?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Orgus number two thousand twenty-four dash sixteen, CDK Springs, McFadden, Arkansas, orgus to rezone approximately two point four six acres located at ten eighteen South Main Street from general agricultural to general highway commercial C two in the CDK Springs, Arkansas.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Seven.
Got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second? Second by M C. Roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved. Next item is an ordinance accepting the annexation of certain territory and the, do I hear a motion to place this on third reading by title only?
Seven.
Got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy. Roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
J J?
Yes.
Orgus number two thousand twenty-four dash seventeen, CDK Springs, McFadden, Arkansas, orgus accepting the annexation of certain territory in CDK Springs, Arkansas, approving scheduled services to be extended, said area and assigning such to those.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve? Got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Or do we have any discussion? This is the land next to the table, right? North, yeah. Roll call.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
J J?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is an ordinance that would restructure our water and sewer committee adding one more resident. Do I hear a motion to approve? I mean, do I hear that, to suspend the rules and place this on third reading?
Seven.
Got a, got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by, M C. Roll call.
M C?
Yes.
J J?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes. Orgus number two thousand twenty-four dash eighteen, CDK Springs, McFadden, Arkansas, orgus to commit section thirty-two point oh one, Water Committee and section thirty-two point oh two, Sewer Committee of Cave Springs, municipal building, declaring emergency for other purposes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Seven.
Got a motion by M C. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by J J. Any discussion? Roll call.
J J?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
Okay, and do I hear a motion to approve the emergency clause?
Seven.
Got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second? Second by Jeremy. Roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
J J?
Yes.
All right. And the last item is a resolution to appoint Reed Thornton to the newly created position. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Almost.
Got a motion by M C. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by J J. All, all in favor, or is there any discussion?
It's not only the gym.
It is.
It's the last.
One, nine, or eleven, I mean. And his resume is on the back of the resolution itself, so.
Thank you for your service, sir.
So any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I have a question. Can you tell me there, if we have, if that resume can be moved along your own side, we have, we have a noisy recording back around the building.
Would you, well, let's get finished with the vote first. Do we have, are all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. And that did pass. And would you like to speak to that or I can?
If you can, I got a copy right here, but we have to, somebody that you have, you posted that's what, now you're looking at some orders.
I mean, the ultimate thing that he has is an interest in the fact he's a citizen. And that is the purpose in having citizens on different committees is to have someone that's interested and wants to be a part of the community and a part of the process. But, you know, it's, it's not a secret who our people are and all of that, but that is, that's the primary, the primary factor is whether some, not someone's qualified to be on a committee is that they're a resident and wish to do so.
Do you, do you typically post your resume?
We, we do not, that's, we've never posted resumes or personal type information because it does have addresses, phone numbers, and it's the personal things on there that, that may not be good.
Can I say something really quick? Reed has been, I think he's only missed one council meeting since the annexation of Scissor Tail. And so I think he's great. And I don't agree with posting anybody's personal information. Every council member that was elected, no resumes are blown out. We just showed exceptional interest in the community. And I thank you for that, Reed. You're great. I don't agree personally with posting anybody's resume.
Because we don't do it with anyone else.
No, and I, we're not posting. But that is, that is the primary factor is people that are wanting to be involved in like she said, I, and he has missed only one since, since the land swap, he comes to the meetings, he's shown an interest and asked to be involved. I make the appointments, the council approves or confirms the appointments. And I always welcome people that are interested in being a part of the city government through committees or commissions that you let me know and let me know what your interests are. And I will be glad to consider that appointment when there's no.
No, just a question. He, this rehab, he's had a professional training in the area that he's like. Sir, if you want to take place in the hiring, yeah, you can ask him, but if you want to take place in the hiring decisions, you're more than welcome to run for council. We have nobody in file that reminds us, so I mean, if you'd like to get more involved, please do, but maybe reserved for the public comment section outside of that, so thank you. You want to make that a motion to adjourn?
I have one question.
Sure.
Daniel, can, you look into Rustic Creek and Shook? That sidewalk still isn't fixed, but also there's like a triangle cut out on the road. So if someone would take it sharp, their tires would go in that section. They've got water lines split up at one time. There are the water lines in the neighborhood of Hillcrest, and they fixed the driveway, but it's still tore up across the road and then the sidewalk is still not fixed. And then that huge triangle that's cut out of the sidewalk, I don't think is very conducive to driving.
Sidewalk, give them, how do you, try to, how do you?
Yes.
Stay Rustic Creek?
On Rustic, on Rustic Creek and Shook where they order us to, to have the water lines for the development. And the sidewalks were cut up for a while. They're done, here it's done. It went up today. I can't, they took it. It's been gone since July.
Do you want to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Seven.
Got a motion from J J. Second, I do, I appreciate it all and thank you, man.